We'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, Tuesday, November 23rd at 6:30. Please stand for the moment of silence and the invocation.
Father, we thank you for the gathering of the Town Council and for the business of the town that you have entrusted these to carry out. We thank you for the wisdom of the council members and the projection of every decision that would be in favor of the common good. We ask so, God, that you would continue to build this city, protect this city, and we're grateful for the officers that are established and set to protect the citizenship of this town. Bless, oh God, the business. Let there be progressive, oh God, action and direction that will cause this town to be better in every area. Bless, oh God, our educational systems. Bless our children. Bless our community. Give us a blessing, oh God, even during the season of Thanksgiving, that families would be protected and that, oh God, reconciliation and love would be expressed in each household. We thank you, Father, for these whom you've entrusted to lead us and to bring, oh God, this town into a blessed place. We ask these prayers in Jesus' name, and we all said, "Amen."
Thank you. Mr. Hardaway, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasure, can you take the roll call, please?
Counselman Spam, Vice President Hardaway.
Here.
Counselman Minchuck.
Here.
Counselwoman Uszak.
Here.
Counselman Pettit.
Here.
Counselman White.
Here.
President Bellu.
Here. And six present. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, we are very honored and pleased tonight to have the swearing-in of new police officers Andrew F. German Perez and Khalil Buchanan. Would you please approach the front as long as the police commissioners and Judge Jean Velasco to do the swearing-in ceremony? Chief, before we start, would you mind introducing each officer, please, so we know who's who?
Yes, good evening, everyone. We have the pleasure of having two new officers joining the Maryville Police Department. The first one is Andrew German Perez. The second will be Khalil. I got to work with that name. Buchanan is going to be badge number 419 and 420. We also have our police commissioners with us, which is Commissioner Legorovit, Ward, and our commission president, Pauling, Bill Pauling.
Thank you, Chief.
the Maryville Police Department. ........................................................................................................................................................................................................................ Congratulations, officers.
Good job, Grace.
You say...
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Judge Velasco, for filling in for Kelly, who was still home with her broken ankle.
Ouch. No, but she stumped it again.
She what?
Yeah, she's...
Moving on tonight to the letter from Town Engineering Administrator endorsing Core Construction's recommendation to approve payment for application number 25 to various vendors for work completed at the Maryville Community Center. Mr. King, anything to add?
Yes, President Bella, the Town's professional staff and myself, we've reviewed the October 2021 billing for work completed at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, and we do concur with Core Construction's recommendation approving the payment application number 23 to the vendors listed below in a total amount of $210,812.04.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uszak, for approval of Core Construction's application number 25, various payments to vendors. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I got a question.
Mr. Hardaway.
Mr. King.
Yes.
And he said it a second time. He said 23, and on the sheet it's 25.
Yeah, the way... The way the bonds are, the bond payment is 25, but this is actually the 23rd payment application.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Mr. Pettit, these redevelopment commission items, we have to vote on these. On to the agenda.
I think that was part of the...
Of the application, right?
Yes, that's part of the application.
Okay. Thank you for clarity.
Yep.
All right. Also now, under communications, I'd like to ask the council to allow me to place ordinance 21-30 on tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
What motion are you making?
I'm asking for a motion to add ordinance 21-30, which was passed out tonight. It was a late addition to the agenda, so we can vote on it later on. Linda gave it to you.
So it's a formal motion to amend the agenda?
No, I didn't get it.
Maybe you did. You can use that one. That's fine.
That's the laptop, as you were sitting in the meeting.
Okay.
That's what it is.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also, I'd like to ask for additions to the agenda for the temporary maintenance easement agreement and the Midwestern Electric, Inc. invoice for streetlights and permission to go into Sedona for doing such work.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uszak, to add the two items to the agenda tonight. This will be under Public Works, Mr. Minchuck.
That's fine.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable voucher approval for November 23rd and the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of November 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uszak, second by Mr. Hardaway for approval. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committees, budget and finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a press release for our ARP, one part of our ARP, anyway, and it is from the Town of Maryville government dated November 23rd, 2021. The topic is incentive program for COVID-19 vaccination and booster shots. Our contact person is Kiana Davis. She's our ARP coordinator in the Building and Planning Department, Town of Maryville. The Maryville Town Council, through its Maryville Physical Recovery Plan Committee, established under the American Rescue Plan ARP, ARP Committee, is offering an incentive program to encourage unvaccinated Maryville residents to complete their two-step COVID-19 vaccination with either the Moderna or Pfizer BioNTech vaccines, or a one-shot vaccination using the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, or a booster third shot if they have already been vaccinated. The town will be providing a $50 Visa gift card to the first 200 residents who show proof of either their completed vaccination or their booster shot, with the shots administered on or after December 1st, 2021. Funding for this first round of gift cards is being provided by the American Rescue Plan and is a qualified use of the funding. Maryville is set to receive over $7.8 million in funding in the next two years to support a variety of projects and purchases to help the town with recovery from the COVID-19 global pandemic, which began in March of 2020. The gift card program is meant to encourage residents to get vaccinated against COVID-19, which will in turn help keep all Maryville residents healthy and assist the town to get through this terrible pandemic. With more residents vaccinated, it will also assist area businesses in keeping customers' interactions safer, no matter what type of business they operate in town. If successful, the ARP Committee has said that it will consider another gift card incentive depending on demand and the pace of the first 200 gift cards, which in total would equal more than $10,000, including associated fees to obtain the cards. Residents may present their vaccination cards along with a valid driver's license or state ID indicating a current Maryville residential address to the Planning Department Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Maryville Municipal Complex at 7820 Broadway. Once reviewed, the gift card will be passed out during that same visit. Residents will be required to sign the gift card, as this is a federally funded program, and proper accounting is needed to use the funds. We hope this incentive helps all residents in the Town of Maryville. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. That sounds like a great program.
I'd like to thank the committee, because a lot of work went into trying to figure out the logistics of this. This was a tough one to figure out.
Moving on tonight to council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir. We have the estimate here from Midwestern Electric to, excuse me, install the new streetlight disconnect for the lights on Lincoln Street within Sedona subdivision. The total cost on that was $2,355.00. Also in unison with that, we have the temporary maintenance easement agreement that has been included in all our packets. We have to go and detail the whole thing, or do you want to sum it up? I know you're pretty familiar with it.
Yeah, well, you can ask Joe to sum it up, maybe.
Sure, definitely. The temporary easement agreement, the maintenance easement agreement gives us the opportunity to go on Sedona's private property and help them out and install the streetlights and do decorative maintenance if needed. So this just gives us the ability from the property owner to make sure that we can go onto the property and do what we have to do.
So, Mr. Minchuck, this was a challenge for us, because we certainly want to keep streetlights on in town, no matter who owns them. And as we know, the HOAs and POAs, after so many years, have issues maintaining some of the items, you know. So this seemed like a very clean and easy way to allow Public Works to go and work on their property, replace light bulbs and that sort of thing, without actually taking over the property, which is another lengthy, you know, process, so to speak.
Lengthy process, and it involves certain layers of exposure from the town.
Right.
We start taking over.
So I do want to point out, and Mr. Hardaway and I spoke tonight about, you know, these are on public streets, on our Maryville roads, these particular lights, and so I think this makes sense for us versus private property, like an apartment complex or something like that, where the business takes care of their lights.
I get you. Got any other questions?
No, I'm good.
All right, at this time, we'll listen to a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Minchuck.
No, reverse.
Reverse.
Sorry. Mr. Minchuck with a second by Mr. Hardaway.
To approve the proposal and the temporary easement agreement.
Let's look. So both.
Yes, sir.
For Midwestern Electric and for the easement agreement.
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, and I would like to add something to that. I would like to thank Mr. Steve King for his diligent work with the sidewalks in Ward 4. He's done a good job, and the people are appreciative. Thank you.
You're welcome. Great. Thank you, Mrs. Uszak. Anything else, Mr. Minchuck?
That is all for now, sir.
Thank you. Elections, public relations, town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. Saturday night, the Crossroads Chamber Gala went off very smoothly. We had a very successful silent auction. We presented the Police Officers of the Year for Maryville and Crown Point, as well as the Firefighter of the Year for Maryville and Crown Point, and I hope that those that attended enjoyed themselves. Secondly, Mr. President, the redevelopment commission and the drawing is out on the table. The redevelopment commission approved a Town Hall beautification slash Broadway corridor, I guess maybe, if you will, we'll expand that, of a not-to-exceed fee of $95,000 out of the Broadway TIF to do some plantings. I would defer to you and Matt, maybe, to give the, those that weren't in attendance, maybe, a thumbnail on what that project's going to entail. Matt?
Go ahead, Matt.
Sure. Yeah, we're expanding on the same theme that we did along 93rd Avenue, which includes raised planters with decorative stone, a lot of native and ornamental plants, some evergreens, really just to beautify the corridor and invest in the town.
Okay, thanks, Matt. And then, obviously, I would be remiss, as an Andorian parent, if I did not boast a little bit that we are, for the third time this fall, an Andorian sports team is going down to a state championship Saturday morning at the Lucas Oil Stadium. Chief, I know I sent you and Costas and Ed the, we'll get them an escort out of town. They're probably leaving Friday morning early. They play the early game on Saturday at 11 o'clock, so hopefully they'll bring back some hardware on Saturday night.
And this is the football team, right?
This is the 2A football team, is playing Evansville Mater D at Lucas Oil. So...
Good luck, Andorian.
And Steve, one last time, I know Leonard and I, we have got to get a meeting to talk about the three bridges, and we've just got to find, you and Leonard and I have to just find a time. We want to do the overpasses, and Steve's gotten me some information from Endot as to what they'll let us do on those entryways, kind of like Valpo and Michigan City have done.
Lebanon.
Lebanon's got them, yeah. So we just need to pinpoint a time, and I'll get an email and...
Yeah, we'll get something together.
We'll get something together.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I got one thing under your beautification.
Yes.
Probably should, could have said and done the public works also, is that, you know, Matt has that tree program on the north end, Meadow Dell, Meadowland, and Turkey Creek.
Mm-hmm.
And so when residents see big X's on those trees, don't get excited, that just means that those trees are going to come down.
They're coming down.
Yeah, and was it the way that it was explained originally?
Oh.
Because I got a phone call from a guy, he was all excited, wanted to know, you know, somebody's marking my trees up. He thought it was like gangs marking the church.
Oh.
So I just...
The red X is...
Yeah. I just want to make sure that the residents understand that when they see those X's on those trees, or even a plate now with a tag...
Yeah, they're going to be more discreet now. That was just the first day.
Right.
And then one of the guys out there...
Okay. If they see something like that on the tree, that means that the tree's going to be removed and the stump will be ground out also.
Nice.
Thank you.
We go on to environmental affairs, Mrs. Uszak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Counselman Hardaway gave an excellent presentation on the gift cards tonight. That's regarding the Pfizer and the Moderna boosters and the shots. And Johnson &amp; Johnson, they were given one shot, but they are allowed a booster. And if by some chance they can't get down here to the Town Hall, that's where you said they're giving them, right?
Yes.
Okay, if they can't get down here, they have pharmacies and health clinics and hospitals that are giving it in the area.
But we're...
Let's clarify.
We're not giving the shots here, Mark. All we're going to do is provide a $50 gift card.
Okay.
For everyone that completes the process.
Well, they will get the card when they get the shot.
Right, after they get the shot.
And that will prove...
Right.
That they got the shot, and then they could get the gift card.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is an excellent program. I hope everybody participates if they don't have that shot. So far, we have 58.1% of Indiana residents that have been vaccinated. We also have 51.3% in Lake County that has been vaccinated. So as you could see, there's more people that have to get these vaccinations. And we also have 10 people that have passed last week from COVID. So I'm hoping people participate with this. And all I could say is get out there and get your shot, and I'm trying to do my duty. In the fourth ward, I am giving rides to people, senior citizens, widows, and mothers with children that don't have cars. I've been taking them to different clinics to get their shots. And if there's anybody else could help from the council with their ward, that would be appreciative. Okay, so on the American economy now, our gas prices have improved, and they are really inflated. Right now, it is at an average of 3.40 cents per gallon. And I go to Luke's. Luke's is right now, I think, at 3.10, which is a good price. President Biden is negotiating with the different countries and the Kingdom, United Kingdom, for a petroleum oil reserve to be brought to America. He says this will help us tremendously. He's looking at possibly after the holidays, which I'm hoping, because inflation is definitely here. And our supermarket stores and our other grocery stores, the shelves have been halfway empty. So President Biden is giving us a guarantee before December or around December that the truckers will be back on the move and the shelves will be filled up again, which I hope. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Question, sorry, question for you, Marge, on the COVID situation. I know at the last council meeting you said there was an uptick. You had seen an uptick in them.
There was what?
An uptick in the infections of COVID.
Oh, yes.
So do we have a positivity rate that we had looked at? Is there anything out there?
Well, there is a positivity rate, but all I could give you was the percentage of who got their shots, and on an average of nine to 10 people passing away in Lake County every week so far. So that shows COVID is still out there.
Big time. So another thing I think we should monitor, too, and it's basically on the Indiana Health Department site, the hospital beds and ICU, see if there's any increase in hospitalizations of COVID people. The reason I'm saying this thing is very serious, because my family has it.
Yes, I know.
When I say my family, I'm not talking about just one, I'm talking about several.
Sure.
So I would be more interested as well, and I'll get back with you and see.
Okay, I haven't heard about hospital beds being available or not available, but I did not look into it. As far as I know, people who have been struck with COVID, they have been going to the hospital. So that's all I could tell you about that.
And one of the other things about this is, the Indiana Department of Health does not keep positivity rates anymore. They depend on the local health department to do that. So if you want positivity rates, contact the local health department.
Is that online?
I would call them versus online.
Okay.
It doesn't seem like they're posting much information online.
You could go through the Lake County Department, Health Department, if you want those figures.
Okay.
They should, yeah.
No more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Later on, under first reading ordinance, Mr. President, we have ordinance 21-30, which is an ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, 2021 and 2022 Saturday ordinance to talk about the carryover of vacation, sick, and personal time. That's coming up later on. That's all I have.
Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Just congratulations to our new officers. Thank you very much, boys, and go get them.
Mr. Minchuck? Sorry, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Do we have to send these guys to the academy?
What's that?
Do we have to send the new hiries to the academy?
If they have not been to the academy before.
Do you have any information, Chief?
No, they already completed the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. They're ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
They were police officers from another area, right, Chief?
Another town, and they chose to come to Maryville.
Okay, thank you.
So they go right into field training?
They start their training in the morning.
Great, thanks, Chief. Anything else, Mr. Minchuck?
No, sir.
Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, two items. Number one, we're going to have a couple of resolutions later on in the meeting for tax abatement for Crow Holdings out at Amerplex at the Crossroads, as well as Kennedy Metal Products in the South Ridge Industrial Park. And secondly, Mr. President, I'd like to call a meeting. Jeff and Margie and I have heard this. Sheila at the Plan Commission, there's a proposed 11-acre rezoning on a assisted living facility on the south side of 93rd Avenue, and this group has been before us before. And what I want to do is get the entire Redevelopment Commission, along with the citizen members of the Plan Commission, Bob Swentz, the Crow Holdings guys, the Misner guys, and the Holiday guys, to discuss the final infrastructure and what this is going to mean. Misner has acquired a lot of property from Holiday. In fact, they're having a conference call tomorrow. I talked to Eddie Adler tonight, Sheila, about what is out there. If everyone remembers, the last issue we did was a $4.1 million bond issue that Holiday could draw down, which they have drawn down to put in 96 in Massachusetts as a part of the Amazon project. There's still money left in that bond issue and figuring out what other streets are needed in Amerplex to finish this thing off and kind of get a thumbnail of what's going to happen out there next spring. Domino's is still under construction. There's been rumors that another 175,000-square-foot building is going to go on the west side of Georgia, right at 98, south of where the Spec Building is going. Crow is going to build another one of those buildings. And the Misner Group, he showed us a plan at the Plan Commission, Sheila. He's got four, five big buildings in back of Pinnacle Hospital and out onto Broadway and back of the, north of Amazon and in back of the Ace Hardware. So I'd like to get the powers that be, so I'd like to call that meeting, Mr. President, if we don't have anything, for 5:00 before the Plan Commission on December 21st. don't have anything, uh, for 5:00 before the Plan Commission on December 21st. Uh, Steve and Sheila, if we can mark that, uh, and I'll make some phone calls. Um, Marge and Jeff and I are going to be here, so Leonard and Rich, uh, you, I'd, I'd like to have you guys there as well as RDC members. And again, I'll have Bob Swentz up there, uh, up here as well to talk about the finances, uh, with the bond issues at Amerplex. Uh, it's, it's one of those things, and hopefully Pat will be back with us. Uh, we'll have Angie there. And it's one of those things, ladies and gentlemen, where that park is already exploded and quite frankly, is about to start getting finished. Uh, within the next three to five years, that park will be completely built out. Uh, so I think we all, uh, this is the time to, to get a handle on everything that's going on out there.
Is that a Plan Commission on night two?
That's a Plan Commission. We, Marge and Jeff and I will be 6:30 at the Plan Commission. We'll do this before at 5:00. Give us an hour and a half to go through that with everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to parks and recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak.
All the parks have been rehabbed, as I've stated before, in Maryville, so I have no further report. Thank you.
Thank you. Abandoned and lighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center, co-chairs, Mr. Minchuck, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, I will refer to Jeff. I think he has an item tonight.
Yeah, we have a few details. We'll open them off. Uh, in attendance this evening, we have the newly elected, uh, president from the Federation of Labor who'd like to make a presentation to the community center. So if you step up to the mic, that'd be great, sir.
He looks familiar.
You really, you called him sir?
That's because of.
Just being funny.
He's younger than you, right?
Yeah.
He's the youngest.
Oh, he's the youngest.
All right, hello, council. Uh, as a resident of Maryville at 116 West 71st Avenue, uh, lifeline since, or lifetime since 85.
And who are you, sir?
Steven Minchuck.
Thank you.
Newly elected, um, Northern Indiana Area Labor Federation President. Um, what fitting to, uh, give you guys a $5,000 check from us to go towards a community center, um, as my first act as president, uh, take care of my hometown with the first act. So I'd like to present this to you, Mr. Bello.
Okay. So actually, you're more than welcome to come to every meeting we have.
Keep coming.
Thank you very much.
We need you guys for your support for the kids.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, other than that, we, we did have a meeting, uh, was it about a week ago?
Yep.
Uh, kind of went over some details on some projects, some little things here and there. We need to button up around the, uh, the center. Um, other than that, we have nothing major going on this time. Can you think of anything, Sean?
Uh, I think they poured all, they're, they're pouring all the concrete out back, aren't they?
Yeah.
Uh, Steve, by the White's Family Field for the bleachers and the dumpster.
Yeah, they're almost done with the, uh, with the concrete work and the fence relocation is, is going on as well.
Okay. Tarens, do you have anything for us?
Uh, just met with Boys and Girls Club today, getting ready for their end, uh, for their birthday party with Santa. Um, we have lots of events and things that's going on now, Christmas parties and celebrations.
Great.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, special projects, food and beverage tax, diversity, town's birthday, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We got a lot, lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, we do.
Um, first off is that, you know, every year, we have a, uh, rebuild of South Lake County in, here in South County. And this year, when they were in Lowell, next year they're coming to Maryville.
Yeah.
And so on September the 17th of next year, the, uh, we will be rebuilding, uh, homes in Maryville. So I would like to ask that, um, we use the community center or the event center per se for our kickoff at 7:00 on Deci, on September the 17th. Because that's where we all get together, everybody gets their assignments, and we fan, span out and, uh, work on the homes that, all, all that day Saturday. And also, if we have anyone that would like to volunteer that day, we're looking for volunteers because we need all of the people that we can. Hopefully, uh, Lowell, I think, only ended up with like six houses this year. And I think we would like to do at least 10 to 12 in our neighborhood.
Wow.
You know, we've done it before, and I think we could do it again. So that's the first thing. Second thing is that you could see these nice cups that's in front of us. These are the cups that we will be, um, passing out at our, uh, event on December the 11th, starting at 11:00. We're going from 11 to 3. We will have, uh, a business expo where all of the businesses that are in the town will have the opportunity to come out and display their wares. And the residents will be able to walk through and see what businesses we have, as well as, uh, we will provide, uh, a light meal, sandwiches and water and pop. Uh, and also, we have save-a-date cards. So if anybody needs save-a-date cards that you want to pass out to, uh, anyone, we've got plenty of them. And we're also sending out invitations for our evening event. We have an evening event that's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and that is by invitation only for the businesses that have been, uh, basically in the town since the inception of the town. And so we're inviting all of those people to, so and then to the council, if you have anyone that you would like to invite personally and send a invitation, please see Linda or, and get some invitations and you, and send it to whoever you desire. Um, and then we mentioned our diversity training. Diversity is going, training is going to start, uh, in January. I think we've got two groups of 20, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And that should take care of everybody. Mr. Price, are you scheduled? You will be scheduled.
Yes, sir.
It's in his house.
You may not, caught you by surprise, yeah. Thank you. Um, so yeah, we will, we would do that at that time. And then also, Mr. President, I read the, uh, responses from the, uh, police officers that went through the training. Uh, we got some very positive, uh, responses back from the police department. That, that meant that they were very receptive to what, uh, the training that they received. And so the, uh, facilitators were very pleased with, uh, those responses as well. So thank you for sharing that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the building of these homes on the Maryville property, are the unions going to?
They're not building, they're not building any homes. Uh, these are just repairs.
Oh, they're just repairs?
That's, that's all they are. They're just repairs.
Well, the unions be involved. They repair.
We, we, we use everybody. We use the, we use the, uh, carpenters, the plumbers, the pipe fitters, the I B W. We, we use everybody.
Well, I hope they call the unions. Thank you.
Yeah, they, yeah, we, we use everybody. Randy Palmetiere plays a integral part in, uh, helping us with this project.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
No problem. Thank you for your question.
Sure.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to department and commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White.
No report.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
No report.
Stormwater Management Resources Director, Matt Lake.
Uh, yeah, real quick, um, as mentioned earlier, Arbrometric is out, uh, marketing risk trees for the inventory, and they should be done within a week or two with all the markings. And then we'll, um, solicit quotes from there after that. Um, had some progress on the Hickory Ridge Lake Apartment, um, Regional Detention Basin. Uh, I got a, um, an email from their legal counsel, and, um, they agreed to sign the easement. And so they signed it, notarized it. They're going to send me the original. I'll sign it, notarize it, and get it recorded. And then, um, then we're moving towards, uh, design at that point. So, um, we'll be submitting an application to Cal for 50% of the design, and then I'll have 50% through ARP. So we're planning on doing all the design, uh, this winter for that project.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
This question is for Matt. I know you have been working on that, uh, sometimes with Joe there. Initially, I, I thought we said, uh, that, uh, the, uh, Little Calumet River Basin was going to play a part of that. So are they not going to, or?
No, they are. Um, well, well, we're going to submit an application to them to cover 50% of the engineering design. Then after that, we'll resubmit another application for construction.
Okay. Could you just kind of just explain to how this would absolutely help, uh, the flooding project, uh, I'm sorry, the flooding problems over there on 57th right off of Grant?
Yeah, within that part of the watershed, we're getting a lot of, um, drainage coming off from the east heading, or, or west heading east into Lateral Six. And this is going to intercept and retain, detain that water, uh, so that relieves, uh, some pressure in that particular area. It's kind of the pinch point for all the water converging, uh, from there and everything coming from, from Gary, uh, off of Lateral Six into there. So, um, the improvements will be a, a large, uh, dry basin, uh, along with all the new infrastructure associated with that. It's also going to help the Hickory Ridge Lake Apartment Pond.
Mm-hmm.
I know when we had the flooding in '08, it was pretty, pretty devastating in that area. And so that's one of our hotspots and something that was identified in the, uh, Stormwater Master Plan is, is, uh, making improvements on. And then this, this is something that we've been targeting for a while, but the, the key was to get that easement. And they're also going to sign, um, a right-of-entry agreement as well. So.
Did they also, um, I know they were talking about a, a dysfunctional pumping station there, so would that be?
All that's included in this whole proposal. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is.
Is that the Gary Sanitary District?
That's their sanitary district service area, but we're talking about stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
This has definitely been a labor of love. Congratulations, Matt, on getting those agreements signed. Uh, and this is going to be a benefit to that, uh, section of Maryville, so.
What's the price tag on this, Matt?
Well, we don't know the whole price tag. We're talking in the millions for the construction, which, um.
Has it been designed, or is it?
No.
You needed the agreements first?
We did, uh, we did preliminary engineering on it. We didn't want to go full design and spend a lot of money until we had the easements.
Easements, okay.
Yeah, you got your easement and right-of-entry, so now we can go forward.
Yeah. And then we'll go through, and that will include permitting and everything else as well, as we're going to need Rule 5 and some other things that, because we're going to be impacting a war of the U.S., so probably core permits, DNR permits and all that. So it'll be quite extensive. And also, um, I met with, uh, NERC and, uh, we talked about the Climate Action Plan, a regional plan that we're looking at. And we're also looking at doing a local plan as well as a supplement to that. So we'll be working together on that. Um, and those will be the results of our greenhouse gas inventory, taking those results and, um, coming up with a, a climate action plan that will reflect our efforts to, um, to reduce emissions. So.
Great.
That's all I have right now.
Steve, any report on the South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, department reports. Tarens?
Good evening. As I mentioned before, uh, met with Boys and Girls Club this morning, getting prepared for their annual, um, Christmas party. Um, it's a really big deal, uh, 500 gifts. Um, we went over just the layouts and went over different options for that. So that was a good meeting. Um, also, we're preparing for the birthday celebration for the town of Maryville that'll be held December 11th. Um, we also have a lot of other reservations and as, that's that time of year for Christmas parties and, and that fun stuff. Um, and also our staff has just been preparing for different things, getting ready for 2022.
Great, thank you. Chief Cortino.
Uh, yes, just, uh, brief. Uh, the North Station, we suffered a, a flooding issue with the business to the north of us about a month or so ago. Uh, they made that adjustment. Uh, we're speaking with them also about the minor, uh, issue that we experienced due to their error. And they are taking care of that, and we will, we'll be resuming our roll calls starting next week at that location.
Okay, great.
I have a question for you, chief.
Mr. White.
First, I want to say thanks, um, for finding Mr. Fletcher. Um, I, I think that the chief, uh, the president had asked you to look and see if you could locate him. They lo, they located him. So he's living. So he's, he's back there. I'm, I'm absolutely glad to see him because he had been a fixture here. And I want to let him know he's always welcome here. And, uh, appreciate you going an extra mile to, uh, find out where he was at. Thank you.
Problem.
Okay.
Sheila?
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. King?
Um, as I reported at the RDC meeting, uh, Mississippi Street Project, uh, is coming to a close for this construction season. Um, although we didn't get the surface coat on due to the weather conditions, um, it will be open to two-way traffic, um, by end of the day tomorrow. Uh, we'll be striping, putting out some, um, uh, construction barrels, um, lining the roadway. Um, that'll be done tomorrow. Our paving program is wrapping up. If we, there's two small projects, well, a couple of small projects we didn't get done. Uh, Veterans War Memorial on 73rd. If we get some good weather next week, we'll try to get that paved and get that done. Um, also, the seal coating of the parking lot out front, um, couldn't get the material, um, to finish that, so we'll, we'll finish that in the spring and replace the, uh, the south entrance over there. We're holding some water, so we'll get that replaced. Um, and that's all I have for right now.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, to, to.
Mr. Pettit.
Just came up looking at that drawing to Steve and Matt. Um, do we want a seal coat if you're going to be cutting and putting planter boxes and, and things in the parking lot, or should we just?
All that will.
Wait re-asphalt in the spring? Does that?
This is going on the grass area in the front.
In the front, okay. So it's not by the gazebo or the walkway?
No.
No. Okay.
Good question, though. That's it, Steve?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have the item added to the agenda, uh, 21-30 on first reading. Madam Clerk Treasurer, could you read that, please, for the record?
Okay. In ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending the 2021 and 2022 salary ordinance in order to increase, allow, able to, able carry over a vacation, sick, and personal time. After we all that.
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Hardaway.
May we just ask her to, uh, just go down to, skip the whereas, just to just go down to therefore be ordained?
The 1 through 6?
Just go 1 through 6?
Sure.
Just, can you just read 1 through 6?
Will do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty. Therefore be ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, that the council is amending Section 9 of the 2021 and 2022 Salary Ordinance in relation to sick time and is amending the personal policy in relations to vacation time and personal days, and will allow a one-time carryover of unused vacation, sick, and personal time from 2021 to 2021, 2022, I'm sorry. And as such, the following shall occur. One, employees may carry over two weeks, which is 10 days, of vacation time to 2022. Two, employees may carry over 45 days of sick time to 2022. Three, if employees end in 2021 with personal time and the max number of six days, the personal days will be allowed to carry over as sick days, increasing the sick days total. Four, employees are encouraged to use the one-time carryover day as soon as it is practical during 2022. Five, and any carryover days not used during 2022 will be forfeited. Six, periodical review of accumulated vacation, sick, and personal time will be provided to employees so they are aware of current days available and may plan accordingly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway. Chair recognizes Mr. Pettit for the second of ordinance 21-30 on first reading. Um, I would like to preference this a little bit by saying that due to COVID, the year 2020 and, and also this year, many employees had days they could not take for a variety of reasons. So this will rectify some of the buildup that they had.
And, and I'd just like to add, Mr. President, uh, to everyone that they understand that this is just a one-time thing. It's not going to be every year. It's just going to be for 2022. And whatever you don't use by the end of 2022 will be gratis to the town. We'll appreciate it.
Mr. President, to, uh, to Chairman Hardaway, and I apologize, Rich, I did not ant, ask this on the, uh, you had the Personnel Committee meeting. I had to call in on Friday.
Right.
Um, the civilian employees in PD are not, they follow your, uh, SOPs, do they not, chief? They're not a part of our personnel policy, are they?
I thought they were.
On vacation days, they are, and sick days, right?
Right.
Okay, so this would apply to the civilian employees, and then.
The SOP is just standard operating procedures for the police.
For the officers, right. And then obviously, it begs the question on the other two elected officials, the judge and the clerk treasurer, uh, are there? Because we talk about employees and use that term in generalities, and they're a part of the salary ordinance and the personnel policy. Have they adopted the town's personnel policy?
Um, Judge Velasco has done that, actually, a few months ago. Um, we haven't received anything from Kelly.
Okay. Okay.
This would apply.
So everyone's covered.
This would apply to all employees.
All employees, except the officers.
Right, right.
And the firefighters.
Right. Good question, Mr. Pettit. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any other questions?
Off of the boat.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please, on this ordinance.
Councilman Spann, Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bello.
Yes. Motion carries, six ayes. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances. We have ordinance 21-28. It's the ordinance of the Town of Maryville, um, adjusting salaries in the calendar year of 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit for approval. Just anything to add on this and what we're doing?
Simply to restate, I suppose, from last week that this is a housekeeping matter to make sure that the ordinance is in line with what has occurred through the year pursuant to the FOP negotiations last December.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, open to the public. Is there any public comment on the second reading ordinance, 21-28? Any public comment? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Spann, Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bello.
Yes. Six zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 21-29. This is amending a variety of ordinances for pay for employees of the town of Maryville for the calendar year of 2022.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mrs. Uselak, who is fighting with Mr. Pettit.
He gave it to you.
You recognized? Trista, I believe only one area of this ordinance is actually being changed. Can you please enlighten us?
The police department officer sworn officer raises are included pursuant to the FOP negotiations. One important note is that this is effective as of January 2nd, which is the Sunday that starts the immediate first payroll period of the new year. So January 1st remains as the 21 ordinance laid out.
Thank you.
That's a very good distinction. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from the council? Any public comment tonight on ordinance 21-29, increasing salaries in the Maryville Police Department for next year?
Mr. President.
Public comment? Mr. White?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to make a statement in terms of public comment. Sometimes I think that when we ask for public comment, the public really don't know what we're talking about because we go right through it. And sometimes, only because I sit here, is how I understand it. So I don't know in the future, how do we let the public know that we'll be talking about these ordinances? So we can give them a chance to actually figure out what we're talking about. Because I know.
Quite sure what we would do with that. They're on the agenda, which the public can grab. We talk about the ordinance and just explain what it's for, so I'm not quite sure what else. I'm open to suggestions.
Well, I'll get back to.
Public could slide it in.
It's published, correct?
It's published, yeah.
It's published as well.
Published. The only other thing we could do, Mr. President, is have Linda, any of the ordinances that are on second reading, make five copies of each of the ord, depending on how many, but depending on how many you have, you could have a lot of paper up there. But have extra copies when they walk in at the black podium there and just, I don't know. That's the only other thing I.
I mean, as long as.
They could read it on their own.
You do your publication on, on these ordinances which involve monetary figures. I mean, you're in full compliance with the law. And if people want to come in and make public comment, you can invite them to make public comment.
And I think the president, when he says this, he says public, he says under any comment, under ordinance, whatever, on second reading. So it's kind of like established that it's for the second reading of this ordinance. It's not open to the public for public comment at the end of council meeting.
It's a little different than the public hearings we have at BZA or.
Right.
Or Plan Commission where the people are getting the certified letter, Sheila, that there's a public hearing and you can come into Sheila's office and look at the plans.
Right.
For variance or subdivision, what have you. This is a little bit different situation for a public comment or a public hearing.
Yeah, I just think that we have to make that clear because if you're asking the public for a comment and they don't know exactly what they're doing, even though we may, as you say, publicize it, I don't know in the terms of everybody reading newspaper. But I just want to kind of just bring it up because we talk about public comment. I think the public should have a say. Or if they don't understand what we're talking about. Like I said, I've sat here.
Well, we could try the suggestion and make just a few copies.
Sure, I think that would be.
Available at the podium.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Start with that.
Yeah, I think that would be great, actually.
Has somebody complained about not being able to make a public comment?
Well, I always, you know, my constituents always ask me what's going on and if I show them some generally, like, well, what's that? You know?
Sure.
Then how do I make a public comment? So if I can't tell them how to do it, then I think that we should at least let them, if they come to the meeting, just like Sean said, we got five or 10 sheets out there, at least they'll say, well, we gave them opportunity to speak.
Because they can read it by the time we get through the committee reports and we get to general orders, there's usually enough time.
Yes.
Where someone could look through an ordinance if they want to when they have a question.
That'd be fine.
You gentlemen are taking up public comment time.
We're the public.
Is there any public comment on ordinance 21-29?
We're the public.
Which increases salaries for the police department for next year. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilman Spann, Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
President Bello.
Yes. Six zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolutions. We have resolution 21, I'm sorry, 21-71. As amended, it's a increase to general contractual services of $3,000. The decrease is coming from general part-time custodian. The net effect is zero.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Any clarity to offer, Trista?
I can only really restate what I see in the resolution. I did not talk with Ms. Rosas about this. She had prepared it. I believe she just simply had mistyped the line item numbers that were associated in the resolution 71 from last meeting. It is as a result of needing some replacement while Bobby is on some medical leave.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to resolution 21-77. Resolution again, transfer of funds. The increase is in the general electric and gas. The decrease is from the office supplies. The total amount is $6,000. The net effect is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval. Discussion from the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to resolution 21-80.
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of resolution 21-80. Resolution of Town of Council of Town of Maryville, adopting real and personal property tax abatement, including the creation of an economic revitalization area.
This is the Kennedy Metal Products tax abatement, Mr. President, in the South Ridge Industrial Park. And speaking with Attorney Anderson, who's in the back row, when we did tax abatements out in South Ridge before, we did them lot by lot and not the entire, so we have to do an ERA for this particular property, correct, Richard?
Correct.
Any questions for Attorney Anderson? Any further questions from the council?
Motion to approve 21-81.
No, we're still on 80.
We're on 80. We're good right now.
Oh. You know what? It shows a holiday. Get my ass. All right. 21-80, I apologize.
Hearing none. This is a resolution, a roll call vote, I believe is proper. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. You're welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Quiet for the rest of me.
Mr. Minchuck, would you like to introduce the next resolution, 21-81?
Yes, we have resolution 21-81, a preliminary resolution of Town of Maryville, Indiana, approving real place, real property and tax abatement.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded by Mrs. Uselak. Mr. President, would you like to go further?
I'll take it from there. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Oh.
Yes, Mr. President?
Councilman White.
Um, the preliminary resolution here approving real tax abatement. Now, where is this exactly located at, the 21-81?
21-81 is the spec building right now, Leonard, that's being built by Crowe Holdings on the west side of Georgia, south of Pinnacle Hospital, that big.
Okay.
278,000 square foot building.
Okay.
It looks huge.
It looks bigger than Midwest Tiger for some reason. I don't know why, but it does.
It is gigantic because it's right next door to my law.
Yeah, it's huge.
Taking away your view?
Taking away your view of.
You'll be okay. You'll be okay.
We're progressing.
Okay, I feel like I'm losing control of the meeting now.
Oh, the wheels have come off, Mr. President.
Any other questions on resolution 21-81, as stated by Councilman Minchuck? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the last resolution, 21-82. This is a resolution moving a bunch of money. Trista, help us out with this.
The, I'll flip to my copy here. The main purpose of this transfer within the ARP fund, which is allowed because it is within the fund monies itself, is to fund some additional items that the committee has recently approved, the largest chunk of which is some electronic equipment for the police department to increase their patrol capabilities. The items that were approved are within the original plan, so there is nothing else to amend in that fashion. The monies that you see, because it is a transfer, have already been additionally appropriated as pursuant to the requirements. So the only thing that you need to do to be able to allow this expenditure is the transfer that you see before you. We took some from Mr. Lake's budget because he won't be spending it all immediately, and so that's an easy place to move it from. The second place that is being moved from is the remainder of what was originally allotted in the appropriation in the revenue replacement department or category. So that 250, 225,000 dollar amount is what was left of the original 1 million that was appropriated in the revenue replacement that had not been earmarked for anything specific.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mrs. Uselak for approval of resolution 21-82. Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Um, I'm just trying to make sure that I have an understanding as to, I think she says we're going to take down Matt Lake's stormwater.
By the 50,000 you see on the sheet.
For the ERP, not our regular budget.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, man. I thought it was your original budget there. Okay, all right.
Like that was a new one for me, so.
Okay. My bad.
Any other questions by the council? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I'm running out of paper. BZA and large gathering actions. Sheila, anything tonight?
No, sir. Nothing tonight.
Old business. Is there any old business before us?
There's not.
Well, thank you, Mr. King.
You're welcome. Just trying to move it along.
Steve and Jeff are working in tandem.
New business, vaccination. We took care of that under your committee, Hardaway. Any other new business before us?
No.
Oh, okay. Public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow two minutes for public comment. It's not a debate, it's just your comments. Feel free to say whatever you'd like, Gene.
Oh, well, I don't think you want to hear whatever I have to say, but in any event, I'm going to have one of my staff hand to you a copy of the yearly financial summaries for the years 2019, 2020, 2021, and also the number of case filings from 2017 to the present. Now, you will note that on, on the printout, it shows the actual revenue generated by the court during those periods of time. Obviously, the biggest number was in 2019, and these numbers are, are actual based on the Odyssey system that taken into account all the finances and stuff. At any event, you will note that back in 2019, the court generated somewhere around $873,000. And 220, because of the pandemic, it generated $542,000, even though we weren't here. I mean, the building was actually closed for, I think, maybe five or six months. However, my people, because we had the foresight to have laptops and stuff, were able to remotely start to collect monies that had been outstanding that hadn't been collected. So what you see in 220 and 221 essentially are monies that were owed and never collected, which I'm attempting to collect for the town. This, so currently, up to, I believe it's October, we've collected $449,000. Now, as you know, the budget for the court runs around $400,000 a year. Now, all the money that comes in, and I mentioned this several times, all the money that comes in, only a portion of it remains with the town. The rest of it is, is required to be spread out according to state law. My suggestion was then, has been all along and continues to be that we need to contact our state legislators in order to be able to get them to increase that amount so that it becomes less of a burden on the town. All right. In any event, you know at the bottom that 2017, there were 7,540 cases filed. The number of criminal misdemeanors generally flows around six, 700 of them. The most important part is the infractions and the ordinance violations, which tend to make the bulk of the money for the, for the town and for the court, especially the ordinance violations. They have, they started to decline in 2018 and continue to decline. It wasn't until we appointed the new police chief that, that the trend was reversed. However, as we all know, we are currently pending litigation, and so there are no new filings thus far. All right. So it's amazing that $449,000 and only till October has been collected in view of the fact that there's no, no new cases being filed. Now, interestingly enough, we went, we actually got an agreement from the town to be able to proceed with the ordinance violations because there was no other place to take them. And so consequently, in the past, I think, three months, maybe four months, we've generated almost 600 of them, which is excellent. So I just wanted to be sure that going forward, that decisions about the future of the court are based on accurate financial information so that there's no misunderstanding between the council, the council members and the court regarding that situation. Having said all of that, I think that, as you know, the lifeblood of court is the enforcement of the ordinance and infractions and the criminal cases. So, you know, basically, it's a miracle that we're still operational and making a goal of it. So if anybody has any questions now or later, you know, I can be reached easily through the town court and be happy to answer that.
Thank you, Judge.
No problem.
How y'all doing? My name is Robert Freeman. I live at 1271 West 76th Avenue, Maryville. And I have two complaints. The traffic on US 30 going east and west, the red light, it lasts eight minutes. Okay, then going north and south, red light lasts about two minutes. All left turn signals last 20 seconds, 10 seconds, yellow. We need more longer time on those, on those lights for the left turn signals. And on the new lots over here in Savannah Ridge on 76th Place, okay, lot number 96, they surveyed land off every, the other day. And 98% of that survey of lot 96 has taken up my whole backyard where they have it marked off, lot 96. So that means that will take up by 98% of my yard.
Steve, do you know what you're referring to, what project that might be? I'm not familiar with.
Savannah Ridge, the new project over here.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
Oh.
Say that again now.
They, they, they came out and surveyed lot 96. They surveying their area off, they marking off the land.
Right.
Okay, where they're going to build a house. Lot ninety-six is next door to my house. They got it marked off to my, where they got the whole backyard marked off as lot ninety-six.
Okay. Yeah, we have to take a look.
No, that might be locates.
We have to look at the.
Probably just locates. Yeah, it could be low, yeah.
When you say marked off, what are you seeing, Robert?
They got, they got the stakes down and then they got the stakes down.
Little flags?
Yeah, where, yeah, and then they got, they got the lots marked off, ninety-five, ninety-four, ninety-three, all the way around. But ninety-six, I went over there today, over there where they building the houses. Ninety-six starts over here and it ends completely in my backyard.
Okay, I'll tell you, here's two things. I'm assuming they're probably just locates.
Okay.
Because they locate the whole area before they start doing anything. But get with Steve, give him your address and we'll pull the plans and look at lot ninety-six just to make sure there's no problems with your property in lot ninety-six. I doubt there is, but we'll double check.
As the property owner, though, do you have a ser, did you have a survey done of your property when you bought it?
Yeah, I got a survey, but, uh, yeah, I got a survey, but they taking over my whole, uh, lot. I can tell my next door neighbor, they got his, uh, land staked off at the back of his property. Mine staked off to where they taking up my whole land.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. Could be, it could be them just marketing utilities. I'm assuming that's where it is, yeah.
So let's verify here, it's twelve seventy-nine West.
Twelve, twelve seventy-one.
West one.
Seventy-sixth Avenue.
Yes. Seventy-sixth and Pierce and Seventy-sixth Avenue.
Yep, very good.
All right.
Okay.
We'll take a look, thank you.
Have a good night, sir.
Any other public comment this evening? Announcements, our birthday celebration, as Mr. Hardaway said, December eleventh, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, inside the Mike Anderson Chevrolet Event Center.
And a boy, Mr. Bella.
If I didn't say that, Mr. Pettit would just get on.
I know, we'd have, we'd be here another fifteen minutes.